Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council, this 22nd day of June 2020. Want to welcome all of our guests tonight. It's good to see people in what we call our new chambers. So, welcome everybody. And of course, this meeting, we also are offering via phone conference. So, we've got a different procedure here from opening up. So, the first thing I would like to do is ask the city recorder to take roll call of council and mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and just call even those that are present that we can see since we are on the phones this evening, just for everybody's record. Obviously, Mayor Robert Schaefer.
Present.
Recorder Gary Withie is here, present. Wayne Hostet.
Here.
Stevie LaRose.
Here.
Jim Epling.
Present.
Mike Stedham.
Here.
Thank you, Mike. Brandon Waters.
Here.
Eugene Underwood.
Here.
Chuck Shaw.
Here.
All accounted for and all present, Mayor.
Cut. Is there anybody else that's joined us via phone conference? If you're out there, please disclose yourself at this time. Okay, hearing none, we'll move right along. We've got a big agenda tonight, council, so let's see if we can't book through this. First item on the agenda is a consideration of our council minutes of the meeting we held June 8th of 2020.
Need to approve and waive the reading?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Counsel, the motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes as they were presented in your package? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sorry about that, Mike, I'll wait on you next time. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment. Because we had so many people sign up today and answer yes, is there anybody that wants to speak that's not on the agenda for a grant for public comment? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of our 2021 water and sewer utility budget. And what I will do is I will run down through the numbers real quick to consolidate it. We do run our water sewer utility jointly in a consolidated fund. So, council, you can see the numbers that break the funds out separately. I'll go over the consolidated numbers. Our consolidated operating revenue is $2,888,680. Personal services accounts for $988,700 of that. Contractual $13,000. General and admin $200,700. Our general liability insurance combined is $35,300. Supplies $219,700. Utilities $193,400. Depreciation $855,000. Maintenance $203,400. Total operating expense comes to $2,709,200. You'll see, council, that is an operation profit at $179,480. Again, remember, these are all projected numbers as we still try to get through this unprecedented time of the pandemic. So, these are numbers that we're going to put out there. I certainly feel that next year into or at the end of the first quarter, we'll have to revisit these numbers. Anyway, that leaves $179,480. You get all combined, you take out the interest income, entrance expense, the non-operating expenses, capital contributions which are none, brings us to $54,382. The important factor about this whole page, council, is that we stay in compliance with the requirement for our debt covenants on our bonds. Actually, we're required to be at 115%. And you'll see that our availability for debt is $1,034,480. And our principal and interest on all of our bonds that we have annually totals $899,96, which leaves us at 115.1%. So, therefore, pay per cents right here, this looks good because it keeps us in compliance with our debt covenants. So, that is the consolidated budget. I'll entertain a motion.
Need to approve?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Counsel, are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item would be the general fund budget revision. Again, council, this is not required by statute, but it is my promise to you that any time that we move funds, even in-house, from item to line item to a different line item, I bring it before you so you understand exactly what we're doing. If you look at your overall financials that you received today, you will see a negative in the line items of the fire department. And what this is doing is we're going to take $7,000 out of their contractual and we're going to move it to their commodities. And therefore, the negative that you will see will work itself out with this change. And again, what's important by statute is that our budget stays within the line item of each given category, i.e. fire department. So, we are still compliant, just moving that $7,000 around. So, therefore, I would ask for a motion and approval to change that $7,000 from contractual to commodities.
Need to approve?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Counsel, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion so carries.
Gosh, I can't hear you. Lot of delay.
Mike, are you on a delay?
No.
Ah, no, I'm sorry, man. I keep scooting right along. Sorry about that. Okay, so the next thing, the next thing that we're going to tackle on the agenda here is, it was a little over three months ago. As a matter of fact, as I was looking at my calendar today, it was actually March 9th that we did our first round of grantees come before us to make their presentation. As the normal process would be, the very next council meeting, the second group would come, which is all of you this evening. So, we're glad you're here. We're glad to get this underway. And what will happen is, is I will call you out and if you would please come to the podium and state your name and then just give us a brief synopsis of what your grant is all about. I'll give you three minutes and in five minutes, I'll pound my fist. But please come and tell us, there are a couple of things, caveats, that I would like you to know in advance. At the last council meeting, we did decide that we were going to lower the grant amount and we're just doing this so that we could move forward because there's still a lot of unknown in our fiscal reporting due to the fact that we don't end our fourth quarter of the last fiscal year until the last day of June. So, we really do not know how things will wash out. As I've always stated, I think our utilities will have much more of a struggle with loss of revenue than what the city itself will. So, we've decided to move forward with $20,000 being the dollar sum earmarked to give out for grants. That's significantly lower than what we went into this planning for. So, in lieu of that, there have been a couple of things that will not be considered tonight on our agenda. The Nicholas County Fair, of course, has been canceled. I would also like to bring to attention and receive the letter from the Somersville Public Library. And basically, what they tell us is they are part of our regular budgeting process where we fund our public library, but in lieu of the fact that their project was a construction project to do something with the library, in a very kind way, their director and their board have sent us a letter saying, "We'll pull our application back this year and therefore that'll allow you to give those monies to the other needs that we have in the community." So, we received that from the public library. So, with that said, let's go ahead and get started. And the first one on tonight's agenda would be New Beginnings Resource Center.
Good evening. I'm Rhea Robinson and as the mayor said, I'm with New Beginnings Resource Center. We're a ministry of New Beginnings Resource Center located on Broad Street here in Somersville. Our resource center is located in the old Sears building behind Tudors. So, we moved from our third floor of our church to 10,000 square feet and we're still busting at the seams trying to get more room. I'm here to talk about our baby ministry. Right now, we have serviced, last year, we distributed 15,100 diapers. And it's an item that people who are struggling or people who are working and struggling, that's a hard thing to come up with that money when you're trying to pay bills and other things. Last year, the council was very gracious to us and granted us some money that we were able to purchase 30 car seats, new car seats that we distributed. We also distributed about 30 to 40 pack and plays, baby mattresses. These are all items that it's difficult for people to attain, especially new items. So, that is part of our desire is to reach out to not just the city of Somersville and to Nicholas County. We've actually reached out to our surrounding counties. We have helped out folks in Clay, Webster, Logan, Mingo. We've been in Raleigh, Fayette, Braxton. And there is no stipulation, if you come to us with a need, we're there to help you. All we ask is your name, address, and how many are in the family. We are also now a USDA food pantry, so that has drawn more folks into us. We served close to 4,600 people, families, last year, and it's growing every year. So, what we are asking for is assistance in obtaining baby items, hygiene items, diapers, car seats, anything that you would need to take care of your child. We take a lot of this for granted. We think that everybody has the same thing that we all can maybe go out and get our hands on, but we found that there's many, many, as I refer to them personally, is working poor. They're out there, they're working, but when you're trying to decide if you're going to pay your water bill, keep your lights on, or my child needs a car seat or ductors. So, we did ask for $10,000 in this grant, but we would appreciate any assistance at all. And I'd like to personally thank you all for your generous assistance last year. Like I said, we were able to buy car seats, which is something that's very difficult and very expensive at times to get your hands on. So, that's what we're here for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Rita in the Family Resource Center?
I have a question.
Yes.
How do you go about working with other agencies or groups, organizations in the community to coordinate what you do and what they do?
Okay, so we network. Our pastor is very active in the city and in the county and actually in the state. He's been a pastor for many years. So, and myself, I've been a resident of Nicholas County for over 30 years. I worked as a nurse for the majority of my time in this county. My husband is a retired police officer. So, those folks know us, DHHR, WIC, Defaultless Shelter, SOZO, just all these organizations, they know us because we network with everybody. We don't have any boundaries as to who will assist or what we'll do. So, they just seem to find us. And we believe that God puts them in our path and he gives to us and we share what we get.
So, you serve who's whoever comes?
Yes, yes. Not just Nicholas County residents. And we get a lot of questions, "Do I have to be a citizen in Nicholas County? Do I have to live in Somersville?" And our answer is no. If you come to us, again, we ask for your name, address, your phone number, because our food boxes that we distributed, the Mountain Food Bank requires that of us. But other than that, I get messages on Facebook. We get a lot of public media type things that people reach out to us.
So, you're open one day?
Well, actually, we're open any day that somebody needs something and they reach out to us, we arrange for someone to meet them there. Our scheduled times open are 11:00 to 2:00, the third Saturday of every month. But if we have a man hour, we could be open probably every day for at least a few hours. And that's our desire is to be available, to be at least open maybe three days a week. And anybody who wants to walk in or come by, they're welcome to it. We give out clothing. We have a whole staff of people who work very tired asleep with clothes. And it's not just anything we throw out there. It's if God wouldn't wear it, we'll give it to you as, you know, like, hey, I got a nice shirt or whatever. We don't give it to people. So, we want to be able to serve folks and not make them feel like they're beholden to us or that we look down upon them. We treat them with the respect that we feel like they deserve because everybody runs across hard times and that's what we're there for.
Okay. Thank you, Rita.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Okay, next would be, is anybody here for Nicholas County Senior Center? Okay, next would be the Nicholas County Veterans Memorial Park.
Hello, I'm Emily Stacey, the park manager over at Veterans Memorial Park. I've been here a couple of times, you all have probably seen me. But I'm just here to present today, our initial project for this year was the renovation of our public restrooms at the Ball Field location because that's our main restroom. It's our largest facility and it serves the most amount of people in our park. And so, we originally asked for almost $6,000. And so, we understand that we are not anywhere near getting all of that because of however many people that have applied and all the needs in our county and our area. So, we just, I just kind of want to present to you, the biggest thing that we're trying to work on right now for this project is I would really like to get some heating units in there and that would allow us to have the restrooms open all year and then it would become a four seasons restroom facility. And last year, it was the biggest notice was that we had such a late winter. It was so warm for so long, but because of the park needs with lights in the park and the other things that we prepare for in the winter, we had to close it mid-November, which means that there was like a month to a month and a half where people could have been using the park more or more often than they did because we didn't have a restroom facility available to them. And so, our biggest part is to try and get that open all year and then we can have more people be able to use it and that would help extend our programs a little longer and some of the sports go a little longer. And in the spring, they open, we try to open them as early as we can in April to accommodate Little League and before the Little League season and the baseball seasons and things start and the spring soccer season. But if the weather, it was late starting but early ending and we had snow all the way up until May this year, so it was kind of a difficult call to make whether to go ahead and open that and risk having to fix some of the plumbing that ends up, because the way that it's plumbed is in the ground and so there's potential for a lot of freezing. And so, we just kind of need to get that in the process. So, really, the heating units, which we have with the units and all of the supplies brings us down to $2,000, so that's kind of our big goal.
All right, council, any questions?
Will you have it open all the time, I mean, like January and February too?
That's the goal, was that we would have a heating unit in there and then that way we could have that on. And so, in that January, February, when it tends to be colder, we would have a heat source to provide to those so that the pipes don't freeze.
Somebody won't be around to take care of it?
Right, well, I mean, we still have, yeah, we still have a person on staff in maintenance during that time and then the park manager is there also. So, there would be monitoring of it, yes.
Okay, and just one piece of clarity, this is the restrooms that are by the Ball Field, not by the barn?
Yes. No, the barn bathrooms were not, are not a project for this year.
Okay, so it's the one.
It's the Ball Field. Those are our largest and most public facilities.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Emily. Okay, next on the agenda would be the Nicholas County Old Main Foundation. I think we have their president, Joe Hammer, with us.
I am Joe Hammer, president of the Nicholas Old Main Foundation. Our project this year includes repairing and/or replacing exterior doors and windows as needed and also the cracked plaster on the inside of the building. If we can save our utilities for the year, over $8,000 on the building, if we can weatherize it, we can probably cut that down significantly. And I'd just like to add that recently, under city ordinance, we had to have 13 trees cut and four trimmed at an expense of $16,300. Our budget for expenses is $16,000. So, we applied for the grant to do the weatherization on the Old Main.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Joe. Okay, moving right along.
Yes.
Do you have a question, Mike?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Moving right along, next is Panther Creek Elementary.
Patsy Rad, is that right? My name is Patsy Rad and I'm representing Panther Creek Elementary. I teach over there, physical education, health and art. And for years, we have used our driveway and our loop to practice running track, physical education activities and also after-school activities with 4-H and our twirling team. However, it has become so busy because our campus has grown and we have a wellness center now. We also have a senior citizen building and it's become so, with traffic, that it's getting too unsafe for the children. So, what we're wanting to do and what we've been working on for the last school year is to raise money for a walking track and a community track in our area. So, so far, we have raised over $12,452. And we have supposedly around $9,548 to go. We've done that through community donations and school-wide donations, activities that the children enjoy, dances and basketball games. We've had some money from grants and a foundation has given us money. And we're asking for 1,500 to 2,500 for hopefully, you know, to help us out.
Okay, great. Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda would be the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program.
Hello, I am Tammy O'Dell and I'm the director of the Retired Senior Volunteer Program and this is Laura Sutti. She's a coordinator. We work with seniors in six different counties, but what we wanted to do to start with is every year we hear that like a lot of seniors have problems with medication being stolen or their family more likely are the ones that are taking the medicine or their relatives or whatever. So, we've gone around to a lot of the programs that we're in in the six counties and a lot of it is they do not know how to dispose of medicine. So, we've been teaching them that and we had wrote a grant about a deterrit, getting rid of the medication the correct way. And then we asked an information on medical history. Well, with the, what we want to do is it's a LOCSS, it's a LOCSS, of course, but we was calling it LOCSS, L-O-C-K-S-S, which would be lockout crime, keep seniors safe with an extra S there. And what we do, we've been explaining to a lot of our volunteers, they normally keep their medicine in the bathroom and such. So, now we're trying to tell them, you know, that's where everybody's by themselves. So, don't do that, you know, everybody can get their medicine. So, anyways, we're trying to teach them to teach, put their medicine in the correct way so their grandson and kids or relatives doesn't get the medicine or anybody else. And most older people have prescription drugs or narcotics that they don't need or whatever or have, you know, that no one else needs to have use for. So, anyways, with this, it has a LOC and we didn't do it with a combination LOC because we're afraid a lot of people would forget their combination, which would be me. But anyways, it's got a key to it and you lock your medicine up and then we've let them put it in their kitchen or someplace where if someone came in, they couldn't just walk out with this. And if they do, you more or less can see it. And our goal was to give it to seniors and some veterans, of course, here in Nicholas County and anyone with disability. And we would hope to work with the police department, the EMTs, the schools and any other, like the senior citizens programs also and hand these out in our county. That's, that is our goal, to hand out these boxes. And in the boxes, we have a, we have wrote a grant and we, it all kind of goes together. This is the deterrit and it's got a little thing in there that shows, you put your medicine in it and you fill it up with water, you shake it and you get rid of all the medicine and this is, and then this is biodegradable. So, that's going to go in there so they can get rid of their medicine. And then this is, and EMTs, we did the File of Life and we've handed out over 5,000 of these to people and you put it on your refrigerator. And with that, the EMTs can come in, they know where the medicine is. If they're unconscious, they could tell, you know, we go to that. And then at the same time, we're going to tell them to always put their key in that in the refrigerator so it all kind of goes together. So, if they would have questions.
Yeah, so I've never seen one of those bags before. So, you open it up, you pour the medication in there and then it dissolves the medication?
We brought them to everybody.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, they're inside. You can hand it to.
What it does is you can put up to 45 pills or like the patches that you get and they're all sealed, but you rip that open, you put the pills in it, you put a third cup of water in it and you seal it back. And if there's a hard little thing in there and it dissolves the, it dissolves the medication instantly. And then that's biodegradable, so the medicine doesn't go back into the landfill. And so, we're trying to teach, you know, all our volunteers say they flush it down the commodity. And we're like, no, don't do that. So, we wrote a grant for this too, to try to teach people the right way and to dispose of this medicine that we don't want out there anymore.
Okay.
So, yes, so all of this would go together.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, council, any questions?
How many, what did you?
45 pills, like, you know, if you had an extra, and then a few patches. You know how you get the patches that sometimes you get, you can put those in there and dissolve. We have larger ones and we've been giving those to like spouses that maybe lost their spouse and they have all their medicine because the pharmacies now don't take the medicine back. Or, you know, they have to take back with the police, but we thought we were trying to do it at the same time. Because we have over 400 volunteers that are senior related, so that was one of the projects that we worked with too.
And you get rid of it?
You throw it in the garbage can and it's biodegradable, so it won't go back in the ground. I mean, you know, yeah, is that what you?
Right, and then can you go get it more?
Yes, sir. I have them. We have them. Uh-huh.
You need two?
She says.
Yeah.
Maybe evidently. He's got a lot of medication.
I just put medication in it today and used it and it was my old medicine.
Okay. Hey, thanks, Tammy.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, next would be SOZO Recovery House. Andrea and Brandy.
Hello, I'm Andrea Koch. I'm the president of SOZO Recovery House. This is Brandy Wood, she's the secretary. So, we work together in a project called Too Good For Drugs. And what we do with this is we go into the school systems and we teach prevention to kids from kindergarten to 12th grade. And it is based on their comprehension skills. So, for a kindergartner, we're not going to be talking to them about meth and marijuana and things like that. A kindergartner, we're going to be talking about chemicals under the sink and how harmful and dangerous they are and different things like that. So, it is age appropriate. So, this program is an evidence-based program by the Mendez Foundation. It's a 10-week-long curriculum. So, the lessons in this curriculum are fun, interactive lessons. They don't just teach kids, you know, drugs are bad. I don't know about you all, but when I was in school, the program that was available was the DARE program and it showed us what drugs looked like. It told us that drugs were bad and if we did drugs, this is what would happen to our lives. So, they use scare tactics and they're seeing more and more that... So, they use scare tactics, and they're seeing more and more that scare tactics do not work. They may work for a few people for a period of time, but eventually, that fear wears off, and they decide that they want to experiment. So, this curriculum, it teaches kids how to make, or how to set goals, goal-setting skills, decision-making skills, conflict-resolution skills, effective communication skills, problem-solving, problem-solving skills, pro-social bonding, and social-emotional competency. So, it teaches so much more than just about drugs. It teaches kids how to respect one another, how to identify bullying, and to do the right thing. And, and one of the lessons, Brandy's actually going to go over a little bit.
The short, Cliff Notes version of the lesson. So, it really is very easy to grasp. Not every child has an adult in their life who teaches them how to set a realistic goal and achieve that goal. This curriculum does. At the very beginning of it, we teach them about setting achievable goals, and then throughout the entire course, we help them work toward achieving that goal. Now, a goal could be anything, like, you know what? I want to eat less donuts. So, we're going to show them how to set themselves up for success, to eat less donuts. Or, it could be, I want to get an A in English. And we help them work towards achieving that goal. Some, some of them are like, I just want to be nicer to my sister. So, we help them set achievable goals and set realistic steps to achieve that goal. That is throughout the whole course. But then, we also teach them about decision-making. And we, here's just an example. So, we will go through, and it's very fun, it's very interactive, and so, we talk to them, how do you make a good decision? So, we'll, we'll tell them, listen, not every decision is equal. What you're going to have for lunch after school, yeah, you have to, or for a snack after school, yeah, you have to make a decision. But that decision might be easier to make than, what do you do if you see your best friend break the law? Steal candy bar from the store. So, we talk to them about, how do you make that decision? Well, this is the process. You stop, and you think, so you picture, what could the possible outcomes be? You, you decide on that, what could the consequence be? Then you act based on the information you gather, what could these consequences be? And then, you reflect on what happened. And so, we take them through different scenarios. Some are easy, and some make them think a little bit harder. But these kids, you can really see their mental wheels turning. They get very involved in these classes. We have incentives, and I have to tell you, I'm a mother of young boys. Boys are hard to get to participate in some of these, but these boys especially were so interactive, and it actually really opened my eyes. I started doing this with my kids at home, because the young boys in our classes, we just did a fifth-grade class. We're really interested in it. It's very interactive, it grabs our attention, and it's really practical.
One thing that I loved about when we were doing the class this past year was, you could see them starting to make better decisions. Like, at the beginning of the class, we would come in, and we had rewards for them, gummies, snacks, suckers, and then we had journals and pencils. At the beginning, of course, everyone wanted gummies, snacks, you know, the sweet candies and things like that. But towards the end of it, they, they didn't want that anymore. They wanted a journal and a cool pencil, and they were, they were learning how to make good decisions on their own. So, it was something that we actually got to witness, so it was really, really great thing. One thing that we know about in prevention is the fact that we don't expect to stop drug use completely. That's almost an impractical thing, but what we want to do is, we want to prolong their first use, because science has shown that your brain's not fully developed until you're 24 years old. So, if we can extend that first use to 24 years old, then the likelihood of them becoming addicted is less likely. So, addiction changes the makeup of your brain, so it's important to try to prolong their first use. We were asking for fifteen thousand. Obviously, we would be grateful for any amount that could be contributed by the city council, and we just want to thank you all for extending this invitation for us to come and apply for the grant.
Okay. Any questions, Counsel?
What specifically are you going to be using to my?
Specifically, we need to purchase the curriculum. We have four, four grades right now. We have fourth, fifth, sixth, no, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, those are the curriculums that we already currently have. The curriculum from high school and from kindergarten to fourth grade is about three thousand dollars. So, the curriculum is really what we need. We are limited to the amount of kids that we can serve right now, based on the material that we have.
And the workbooks, too. The workbooks actually are sold separately from the curriculum, and every student gets one of these, and they can take it home with them at the end.
Is it like a journal?
It is, actually, if you guys want to take a peek at that, you are welcome to.
We actually brought a game also, but for time's sake, we decided not to do the game, but it's really fun, and it piques kids' interest, you know?
So, it gives them different scenarios, and they answer questions according to the scenario. It's super-interactive.
Okay. Where do you want to work at?
So, we are part of Sozo Recovery House, which is located on 804 Main Street in Somersville. We do recovery meetings for people in the community, people that are trying to come out of addiction into recovery. So, we work out of that location, but we actually travel and go into the schools. So, we go to whatever school invites us to come in. Last year, we were at Mount McCall Elementary, and we were going to go to New Life in Somersville, and we weren't, we weren't able to continue with that.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Next would be Somersville Rotary Club. I think we have President Chris Groves with us.
All right, good evening. I'm Chris Groves, President of the Somersville Rotary Club, at least for the next eight or so days. My term runs out July 11, so. I'm glad to be here, and I appreciate Counsel having us here tonight to go over what we're asking for. Real quick, just, I know a lot of you are familiar with Rotary, but if you're not, Rotary gets behind, you know, functions of fit, one of six categories, and those are basically promoting peace, fighting disease. Rotary in general was instrumental in eradicating polio back in the late 80s. Clean water, we support local businesses, we help with women and children, and we support education. And I will say, the Somersville Club really gets behind education, probably really heavy behind education on that. I'll say, this year started out really good. We had our, you know, I call our flagship golf tournament over at Cherry Hills, we had a good turnout, good support with that. We had our potato auction at the Potato Festival last year, had a really good backing on that. So, we were off to a really good start for the 2019-2020 year. Couple, little quick things we do, we have a food drive, and we buy hands for the food pantry. We give to the Polio Fund, and also give to the Rotary Annual Fund. We give dictionaries out to all the third graders, every third grader in the county gets a dictionary. And then, we also offer scholarships to high school students. This year, you know, one of the members mentioned about how a lot of teachers end up paying a lot of money out of their own pocket a lot of times in classrooms to support their classes and that sort of thing. So, we formed a committee, Barbara Rose, Tammy Odell, Tamara Mullins, Patty Howard, and Anita Groves, and, you know, again, things are looking really good. So, we had made a commitment to give to all the, we're doing it by school at this point. We talked about giving it to teachers, but then we decided it'd be better if we just gave it to the schools, and let them use it in the manner that the teachers there at the individual schools see fit. We've given out to nine schools already, and we give each school five hundred dollars, and we're going to have right now with the pre-k, the K, first and second. This grant would help us do that quicker than if we, you know, we're asking for five thousand dollars, and we understand the situations, because we're really in the same situation, too. You know, we've already canceled our golf tournament, and I'm not sure where the Potato Festival's going to end up to. Plus, backing up, like I said, we were off to a good start, but we had two more fundraisers that we rely on, that's the Pancake Dinner and our Gun Raffle that we do, we were not able to do this year, so. So, that's where we're kind of at. It's, it's, again, we've asked them to use it in manners that, it was something that will last for the next year, the next class, and that sort of thing. The Panther Creek Track was one that might, you know, they could use it for that, I think they mentioned that for that, so. Tammy might have some other ideas, because, again, Tammy was instrumental in that committee on that, but some iPad-like things and that sort of thing, so that's there year after year after year on that, so. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Cut.
I hear that schools were involved in that.
Well, what it was, it was some gays and stuff like, for the priest K to the second grade, and when they go to a different class, and they can keep it in there, and every year they'll use it, year after year. It's not an app, an app that they would use for the classroom. It's like gay, it's something that is a teaching instruction. And then, that way, every child can use it that's in those grades, year after year. And just like the track, they did, that was one thing that they really was going to use the five hundred dollars for, but that would take care of all grades in that grade school, year after year. So, that's, basically, we just did want one thing to be used, just this year, it would be year after year, and that child's money would be used. To get it to all kids.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Kristen. Okay, we're scooting towards the bottom. Wally Squadron, Buck?
We must be on the bottom.
No, you're not on the bottom.
Okay.
Joan is over here patiently waiting.
They just spit it out, I thought I was going to meet you on the free corner and talk to you.
I guess sometimes, you know, you all could come up and say they saved the best for last.
Well, kidding, kidding. For those of you who maybe don't know me, I'm Buck Hannett with Wally Squadron, that's our C flying group here in Somersville. But, we're a bunch of big kids that play with toys, but we put on an event that is very entertaining and very much looked forward to by the community and surrounding states, as far as that goes. This is our 29th year. We continue to get bigger each year. Everything we do for the general public and the folks that come to participate is free. We feed you on Saturday, have a decent fireworks show on Saturday night. It's, it's actually, this year, I think it's going to be more than normal, because everybody needs a little bit of stress relief. It's, it's been a nightmare, and we were up in the air, and kind of still are, as to whether or not we can have it. We're continuing on, we're planning on having it, but with society right now, you don't know what's going to happen. But we're, we're going to make an attempt at it. We've asked for seven hundred and fifty dollars to help us. We've got about a, right ahead of a thirteen thousand dollar budget that we're working at, and that seven hundred and fifty dollars will go a long ways with that. We were not frivolous with the money, we use it, you know, to entertain the general public and keep everybody in good shape. We will have extra expense this year, because we're going to hand out masks for people who want them. We've got to put up barriers, our food vendors and t-shirt sales and everything, we've got to, you know, allow for that, but if there's any way at all that we can get something to help us out, we would appreciate it. But as I listen to everybody else's, you know, we're small fish in the pond, and other people need stuff, and we fully understand that. So, when this all cut loose, I was in Florida, actually, got the last airplane out of there I could get to get back here. We had went, took some family members to Disney World, and they closed it the next day because of all this. While I was there, about the only thing I got out of the whole trip was, we went to an alligator farm, and found out that alligators can grow up to fifteen feet. All I ever saw had four, but.
We needed that.
With that, we'd appreciate any help that we can get. I know some of you's been there, some of you hadn't. We'd love to have you all to come up. It's, it's a good, entertaining, family-friendly event. Love to have you all there, and love to have some help. So, I'm done.
Okay, any questions?
What's the date, Buck?
It's August 12th to the 15th this year.
Scared me to death, Jim, I thought she was going to ask about alligators.
Yeah. I thought a lot of them, I thought they were.
That's enough of alligators.
All right, thanks, Buck.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you.
Okay. Last on the list, West Virginia Ministries of Advocacy and Work Camps. Welcome, Joan Stewart, to the podium.
Hello. I'm Joan Stewart, I am the Executive Director of West Virginia Ministry of Advocacy and Work Camps. Had I been around when they named it, it would not be that long. It formed in 2001 as a response to the 2001 500-year floods that happened back-to-back that you may recall then. It is a long-term recovery organization that is in part of the, it's part of the Presbyterian Church, however, we are very ecumenical. It is, and we realize, too, that one of the greatest disasters in West Virginia is poverty. So, when we are not dealing with an actual event, we are dealing with poverty. We do home repairs for families in need. We bring sixty to seventy-five groups into West Virginia that come from all over the place. We have, we have a memo of understanding with Notre Dame University, we have College of Worcester, Cabrini University, that they are part of who we are. We have prep schools that come to West Virginia, out of Manhattan, Boston, Baltimore, Philadelphia. Love to send those to Mingo County, gives them a really good culture shock. But anyway, they, we bring them into West Virginia to do home repairs and to help families in need. One of the main things that we do, and we have a location here, one of our eight locations is in Nicholas County, they are housed at the Somersville Presbyterian Church. We are not just a Presbyterian organization, because at some of our other locations, we are housed in a Baptist church, Methodist church, we are housed in, we use, work with Catholic charities, and also the, I love to say this, Freedom Full Gospel Assembly House of Prayer in Mingo County. So, we have, we're very ecumenical, we do not proselytize, although we are a Christian organization. What we do is provide for families in need, and some of the major needs in Nicholas County are wheelchair ramps. We built last year twelve wheelchair ramps out of seventeen weeks of groups that came. The next biggest expense is roofing. The funding that we get comes from the volunteers that bring funding with them to help build, and sometimes it covers it, and sometimes it doesn't, and hopefully, at the end of the year, because we are a 501(c)(3), we somehow make it all work out. And we build to code. What makes us stand a little different than a lot of work camp organizations is that we have a project manager on site, and they lead, teach, or get out of the way, depending on the skills of the teams that come in. Some of the teams are youth groups, some of them are adults, some of them, as I mentioned, are students. But we build to code, particularly the wheelchair ramps. The longest one we ever built was a hundred and seven feet. As you know, the geography of West Virginia doesn't make it very easy to say, well, we're just going to build a little ramp that goes right out here, if we're going to build it to code, it's going to sometimes have a few turns and twists. In fact, that one had a birdhouse and a bench about halfway through, that's how long that one was. We, we come to you for a grant, because this is, this is going to be a tough year. We have not been able to have our groups in, obviously. I mean, there's no social distancing in a van to travel to West Virginia, there's, the dormitory space doesn't allow for that. What we are hoping is to be able to say to the thirty-five families in Nicholas County that are asking for help, something besides wait and see. We are hoping to be able to take in fall teams. We have several on the books, and everybody is just saying, they're saying, how much notice do you need? I said, two days. We've already got the referrals, we're ready to go, if it is safe for them to come. We already have fifty groups on the books for next year, because most people have just said, move us to the very same week for next year, and we're hoping to be able to bring them back. As I said, Nicholas County is one of eight locations, and we really hope that we're going to be able to bring folks in. We're going to have extra expense, we'll have to have porta-potties, because we're not going to be able to use the. We'll have to have porta-potties, because we're not going to be able to use the facilities of the families that we serve. So there's going to be some additional expense that we will be facing once we're able to get back to work. But it's an honor to be able to serve families here in Nicholas County. It's been a wonderful place for people to come and to work, and they love Somersville. Many of them have asked to come back specifically here, because they do love this area, so. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any questions, council? Okay, thank you, Joan. Okay, so this council is, how we'll handle this, if you all, what I'll do is I'll get a scrub list for you. Actually, we'll get that out right away, so you have time to review it. And then at the next council meeting, we'll go down through it and earmark, you know, who's going to receive money in the 2021 budget. Moving right along, Recorders Report. None this evening. Mayor's Report. Council, just have a few things I want to quickly run over here. Brown Oaks Board of Directors. I will tell you that they received the resignation of Sean Singer. Sean is, as many of you know, the new business owner of Fresh Start Market. And so she tendered her resignation at Brown Oaks, and the board quickly went into action. Of course, I think they were already anticipating this happening. But anyway, the board has hired, and we welcome, to Brown Oaks as the Director, Bill Anderson. And if I believe, if I remember correctly, Bill started, effective when?
Last week.
Last week. So just wanted to let you know that, council, that Bill Anderson is now the Executive Director or Director of Brown Oaks. The other thing, as you all know, the Rainin Conference Center and the CBB have truly separated, or will truly separate, effective July 1st. The new bylaws of the CBB allow for one member of the city council to sit on the new CBB board, or I should say, the CBB board. It's kind of reorganized, because before it was the mayor recorder and two city councils. The new bylaws call for just one city council, appointed annually by the mayor. So for the next year, which starts July, would run July 1st to June 30th of '21, I'm appointing Stevie Lee Rose on the CBB board. Talked to Stevie earlier, and he's willing to serve. So Stevie will fill that position. Also, council, mark your calendars, or hopefully you'll be able to attend. The new fire truck arrived today. So it's a lot of excitement at the fire department. So actually, next Tuesday night, June 30th, at 7:00 PM, they've invited the mayor, recorder, and council to come down and lay eyes on the new fire truck and get an orientation of it. So I hope you can make that next Tuesday, council, at 7:00. This is very important. I want to plug this hard, and I hope through SCTV and also the newspaper. The City of Somersville, we partnered with Camden Family Health. And next Thursday, June 25th, or actually, this Thursday, June 25th, don't let me get messed up here, this Thursday, June 25th, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, we will be doing a drive-through COVID-19 screening test at the Pavilion Parking Lot. So you'll actually pull in from the Broad Street side, which is the entrance by the city building, go through, get your test, and pull out. They'll exit, you'll exit on Main Street. Again, this is a free test, and so I encourage as many that want to come and take it to take it. As well, council, as I will tell you that I highly encourage and send it out to our city employees that they all get tested. One's concern would be, what happens if somebody comes back positive? The rules have changed. In the event that somebody comes back positive, according to the health department, we do not have to put them off at home unless they have symptoms. If they have symptoms, then that obviously sends them home. If they come back positive, they have to wear a mask until they retest negative. So now, if they would have symptoms, then of course, they immediately have to quarantine at home and the whole nine yards, so. And then the other thing, just while I'm on it, as we've heard throughout the United States, there are many areas, i.e. a favorite vacation spot that many West Virginians like to go to. I will tell you that we put policy in place in the city that if you do go there, and again, I got these guidelines from the health department, if you do go to one of these hot vacation spots where there is an increase in testing positive of COVID-19 and you come back, you have to wear a mask at the city for 14 days. And then again, the protocol's the same. In the event that you come back and you have any of the symptoms, then you have to get tested. And then obviously, if you have the symptoms, it costs for you to get a test. You'd be quarantined and have to go through all that process. But, so anyway, I highly encourage even you, council, to come down if you would so choose to on Thursday and take this pre-COVID-19 screening. Okay, we need some, we need some board members, some volunteers from the citizens of Somersville. And remember, you have to belong, you have to be a resident in the city. Just want to put this out. We have a vacancy on our Forestry Council that's chaired by Kenny Baker. So if anybody out there would be interested in serving on the city's Forestry Council, I would encourage you to get ahold of Kenny Baker or call City Hall, and we can get you connected with Kenny. And then, of course, the Forestry Council would bring your name as a recommendation before the city, or bring it to me, I'd bring it before city for that appointment. And then we also have a member, a vacancy on the planning and zoning. And again, the protocol's the same, but a different person. If you're interested in the planning and zoning, I would encourage you to get in contact with our city recorder, Gary Withy, or contact City Hall, which they'll connect the dots and get you to Gary. But we would like to fill those two vacancies. Now let's talk about fairs and festivals. And as you heard Buck Hammer talking about Wally Squadron and their fly-in, the first thing I want to address is Fourth of July fireworks that the city proudly does in partnership with the Somersville CBB. We are having Fourth of July fireworks. The show is happening. Now, obviously, there are lots of places that you can go in the Route 19 area, both on North Side, Walmart, Berchtesgway, to be able to view the Fourth of July fireworks display. You know, we always say at dusk, dusk means sometimes 9:30, maybe sometimes a little earlier. So we don't set a time. We say when it's dark and we can put the fireworks off, that's when the show's going to happen. Now, what are we saying? We're saying, come, celebrate, enjoy what this country's all about. Freedom, red, white, and blue, you know, the many meanings that this great nation has. But we're asking you to please be respective of everybody that attends and social distance. If you come with a family, stay in your family. And do what you can to not get large packs and large crowds of people or move in on some other family or group of people. And then, of course, we always say, wear masks. It's not mandatory, but if, you know, wear your mask. Again, they say when you're outdoors, you know, that's not necessarily been the protocol. But now we see that these areas that are having the spikes seem to be these outdoor areas. So who knows if you do it or don't, but if you feel comfortable, we encourage you to do it. But anyway, it will happen on July 4th. The last note about fireworks is rain date is July 5th. Now, I want to highlight real quick about the Potato Festival that kind of speaks to a little bit about what Wally got into when he was talking about their fly-in. So we have a meeting this week, as a matter of fact, it's Wednesday at 5:30, right here. And we are planning to move forward with the Potato Festival, which is slated to happen September 11th and 12th. And this is what I say, the door is open now. The governor has opened the door for fairs and festivals. There are guidelines, and we are going to do everything we can do to meet those guidelines. And I also tell people, just like Wally said, we think we're going to, we are going forward with the planning of our Potato Festival. But sometimes we know, as quick as a door opens, it can close. Obviously, if state government comes back and says you can't, then we won't have it. But otherwise, we're going to have it. Now, what I tell people is, it may not be a Potato Festival like you know Potato Festivals. We're going to get through this, trying to follow the guidelines. As he said, you know, one of the big things is the food areas, and all of them carry health permits. So we're going to have to regulate that. It's not going to be Katie bar the door, 20 people standing in line. So we're going to have an entrance into the food vending area and an exit. And there's all other kinds of things that we have to have in that required protocol if you're going to have a festival. And so let me tell you this, it's time for us to have events and open and do things. And, you know, this could go on for another 18 months, who knows? So what we need to do is we need to figure out, how do we adjust, adapt, and overcome, and go back to having life? I don't believe the answer is cancel, 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 cancel. So we are going to do everything we can to put off a Potato Festival and make it so that we are creating a safe environment respective to the unprecedented times that we live with the pandemic. So with that said, mark your calendars, September 11th to 12th, unless some higher authority tells us not. The only other note I want to give you relative to things happening in the city, we are going to start our concert series the 10th of July, which this year, we're doing on Fridays. They're going to run six weeks consecutively. That Friday, it goes from 6:30 to 8:30. We're going to have, and again, this is where we have to make sure we follow the protocol. Typically, we have food, but there's guidelines that all that has to meet now, so we will meet those guidelines. And then the other thing that we're going to do initially is shut down the street in front of the city building to allow people to social distance and be spread out more than just congregating inside the Pavilion Parking Lot. So mark your calendars, the first music at the Pavilion, and it's Brighter Side Quartet, July 10th. And again, I always want to say this, that is brought to you by a partnership with the City of Somersville, the Somersville CBB, and I always give a shout out there for Mike Gregory, who is a real champ, and he is, because he helps us a lot behind the scenes at getting our talent lined up. And, you know, as you've heard today about all the changes, we had, we had four weeks of talent slated already for June that didn't happen. So a lot of work goes into that. So any questions about any of that, council?
What time is it?
What's that?
What time is it?
The music at the Pavilion? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, it's 6:30 to 8:30. And it starts, the first Friday will be July 10th, and it's six consecutive Fridays. Okay, any other questions? Council, you have any comments? Okay. Looks like the next item on the agenda. Hey, how about you, Mike?
I'm good, David, thank you.
Okay. All righty, next item on the agenda is adjournment. All entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you, council.